You ready, Cam? I'll call this April 13th Town Council Meeting to Order and thank all you for being here tonight and for everyone who is logged in online, live streaming. We will have our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance if you'll stand.
Dear Father, we just praise your holy name and we thank you for your many blessings. Father, we thank you for the safety that you gave our citizens and our firefighters last week during the terrible fire that hit our community. We pray that you will continue to bless our citizens and our town and that the decisions made here tonight will be in accordance with your holy will. In your name we pray amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
And as a note to that, Chief Griffin, I see you there. I just want to commend you and your firefighters and our police department and everyone who participated in the safety of our citizens last week. So, thank you so much for a great job, well done. Again, thank you. We are very fortunate to have you guys and ladies watching out for us. So, I will move into, I'll make a motion to, if there's no questions about the consent agenda, is there any questions?
No, but really quick, I would say all first responders from both communities, they was a good team up, really appreciate what all you guys do.
Thank you, Jo Dan. So, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll move into our special presentations and our very first special presentation is Girl Scout Troop 4785. We are going to talk about signage to the Island Greenway. Ladies, come on up here.
Welcome and good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
We want to thank Town Council members, Mayor Pierce, Mr. Healy, Mr. Shutterworth, Mr. Garza, and Mr. Barbie for allowing Troop 4785 to propose our Bronze Award project for Girl Scouts. Girl Scouts have a Bronze, Silver, and Gold Awards. A Bronze Award involves seven steps, should roughly take 20 hours, inclusive research planning to be at the end of fifth grade, but due to COVID-19, it has been added on more time for us to do it. Our girls are 10, 11 years old and the time has come for them to start making a difference in the community and start being involved and take action. We have nine fifth grade girls who are excited to get started on this project. We have taken time to explore the Carolina Beach community. We have gone to all the other greenway like walks and everything. We realized that only one of them, the East Coast Greenway, is the only one that doesn't have the mile markers that all the other ones have and that is the largest one, but the only one that doesn't have it. We are proposing to create a total six-quarter mile marker post to cover 1.2 mile section of this particular trail. Some questions that commonly came up when we were discussing this project is why would we pick this project? And we feel now more than ever people are motivated by the exercise, the fresh air, and all the positive benefits that you get from increased activity such as better mood, more socialization, a time for self-reflection, and accountability to walk, run, and ride for yourself with your family and pets. If the longest stretch of the trail in Carolina Beach is marked, we believe it will positively push the people of our town to set goals to go further and assist with either becoming or helping to maintain a more healthy version of themselves. We are convinced that this is a realistic goal that will help us achieve our Bronze Award which will have a lasting impact on our community. Another common question was how will we finance this project? The biggest fundraiser the Girl Scouts have is the Girl Scout Cookie Program. We will use a portion from our cookie sales from last year and this year to fund this year's project. If needed, we will also hold an additional fundraising activities to ensure that neither the troop nor the town of North Carolina would be required to pay for this project. We will also have it completed before the end of May 2021. How will we put our plan into motion?
This is awesome, I just want to say thank you, you ladies are doing an amazing job.
Thank you.
Just made my day, I'm smiling awfully, it's great. Keep going, sorry.
How will we put our plan into motion? We will work as a Girl Scout troop with the representatives of the Carolina Beach and all the committees between GS Troop 4785 and the Army Crops of Engineers to have this project approved. Once approved, we will continue to work with the committee of the town of Carolina Beach to ensure that the posts are consistent and uniform with the other signatures that are already present, such as size, type, color, along with the other Island Greenways section. We will use a distance wheel to accurately mark the star in each quarter mile. These locations are approximately close to the entrance near Michael Chapel, Michael Chapel Park on South Eighth Street, Greensboro, Greensville Avenue, and the straightaway near the lake between the bridge and the benches, North Carolina Avenue and South Carolina Avenue on both sides. The quarter mile indicators will be posted on the north and south sides of the posts so that they will be visible to the community regardless which direction they travel on the trail. Should the trail be approved at a later date to extend further into Currie Beach, the markers we would use would likely be bolted in the post, meaning it wouldn't be cumbersome to rearrange, replace, and add new posts to continue the trail distance in the future without waste of design. We will work with the town of Carolina Beach to identify the vendors to price the quarter mile markers so that look professional. We would also like to place a very small plague at the bottom of one side of each post to state something along the lines of "Girl Scout Troop 4785, Bronze Project, Year 2021."
This is a map of all the trails in Carolina Beach. All trails have distances labeled from most, most from start to finish. We noticed the section from Mike Chapel Park to Currie Beach of the greenway was not marked. This is, this trail is called the Island Greenway. The Island Greenway is currently the largest continuous trail. We feel this trail should be marked in quarter mile markers. So, the Snow's Cut Trail is half a mile long. So, the first picture with the two signs on top of each other is where it starts and then the one right next to it is where it ends. And then the big map of Carolina Beach is where, is, is some more trails in Carolina Beach. The State Park Trail is 0.75 miles long, right there, the big sign that says State Park Trail is the beginning and then the other one is towards Dobro and then the last one is towards.
The Exercise Loop, Carolina Beach State Park Fitness Trail Exercise Loop is one mile long. The trail has a quarter mile markers throughout and is the second longest section of the Island Greenway section. These pictures clearly show how we could replicate, replicate visible and professionally quarter mile markers for the Island Greenway section that would be clearly seen from either direction where you are traveling on the trail.
The Carolina Beach Lake section is 0.67 miles long. There is a main map showing all greenway sections throughout the town of Carolina Beach at this location. This covered structure and bike repair station was created recently as an, as a part of an Eagle Scout Award project. So, the Eagle Scouts have had their little mark in, in our town, so we would like to, as Girl Scouts, to put, to have input on our town. So, the Island Greenway Trail is 1.2 miles long and extends from Mike Chapel Park off of South Eighth Avenue in Carolina Beach, Alabama Avenue in Currie Beach. The stars are the spots where we'd like to place our mile markers.
As you can see up there, there are the maps and this is showing the area which we would like to put our markers on the trail.
So, we thank you for your time and appreciate you listening to us and we look forward to your response.
Well, ladies, I have to say in my eight, nine years on council, that is one of the most well put together presentations I have ever seen. And you managed to get yourself on the agenda and you made a great presentation and I think it's a wonderful idea. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for these ladies?
The first thing is, A, that was amazing and B, can we have your names please?
I'm Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Sadie.
Thank you, Sadie.
My name's Grace.
Thanks, Grace.
I'm Haley.
Thanks, Haley.
And I'm Kylie.
Thanks, Kylie. I think your presentation, number one, I think if possible, you should ask the town for a copy of that video because if this was me, I'd want this for other troops to see because this shows your impact of, A, your passion that you were able to come up here and do that, it's awesome and B, it's, I think it's a helpful tool that what you're doing right now, if you kept that video, it's, I'd put it on the website for that company.
Extremely impressive presentation, it really was. So, thank, thank you so much for that. I feel, I really feel bad for the people that have to follow you, the presentation was. And I guess my second question is, is, did you bring any cookies at all?
Yeah, I really don't have a lot to add, fantastic job, ladies. I, I agree with what Jay said, I think the rest of the meeting is going to go downhill.
Wow, sorry folks.
But good job, excellent job.
Bruce, do we have a staff liaison for these ladies?
No, I hope that we've been, we're going to put in Eric and Brian, but then involved.
Okay.
I do know they need folks in council so we can send a letter to Matzou, can Matzou...
And I was going to say, I was quite impressed that they included Matzou. We should, we should send them to do some of our other bidding with Matzou, I think. They're, they're quite impressive.
You're hired.
I would put that video in the email.
That's a great idea. So, you need a vote from us?
Yeah.
And you're going to learn so much, I mean, I'm impressed and I know this project is going to do well, but so I will make a motion.
See volunteers, let me know, I thought that was cool as hell.
I'll make a motion to approve the request by Girl Scout Troop 4785 to add signage to the Island Greenway, all in favor?
Aye.
Ladies, our town manager will find someone from staff to walk you through some of the things you may have some issues with and I'm so excited to see this and when you're done, we'd like you to come back and present to us when it's finished and that way we can take a look at it, maybe meet you out there.
That'd be great.
Very good, thank you, good job.
I'm serious about the video.
Every time I start to doubt something, I see these young kids come up with these wonderful initiatives and, and just so well thought out, I think our future is, looks pretty bright.
That was great.
I'm serious about the video.
Y'all think Matzou could tell them no?
All right, Tim, you're going to have to really...
Who put me on the agenda after that? It was awesome, thank you guys so much. Special events for April and May, starting with Fourth Annual Surf Dog Experience, which is Saturday, May 8th at the North End Pier. Followed by the same day, later in the day, CB Street Arts Festival will be held at the Carolina Beach Lake, Saturday, May the 8th. And we have the Tinted Turtle Trot, Sunday, May 16th at Mike Chapel Park, that's a fundraiser for my kid's school, Island Montessori. We do have two new event requests that we're looking for council action. The first one will be from Island Women with Carrie Jones to present.
Good evening. Hi, how are you? Good evening, Mayor Pierce and Town Council, thank you so much for granting us this opportunity to speak to you tonight, I can tell you I need to step up my game because this is, this is good, but it's not that good, so anyway. My name is Carrie Jones and I'm here representing the Island Women, along with me this evening is Kay Rukalski, she's our current Island Women President and Kathy Murray is our president elect and we are here to talk to you about a new fundraising initiative that we'd like to try to do at the end of the summer called Lowe's Food Truck Rodeo, name subject to change, but we'd like to do this event on Sunday, August 29th from 12 to 5:00 PM at the Carolina Beach Lake. If you, sorry, if you don't know that much about us, we are a local nonprofit, we serve all of Pleasure Island as well as the surrounding areas. We are an active group of ladies, about 180 of us and we do a lot for the community such as the beautification of the boardwalk, we do regular beach sweeps, we do the little free libraries, we donate to public schools, our local schools, and also to many of the other nonprofits such as the Federal Point Center, Help Center. We are hoping to introduce a new fundraising initiative, I think you're familiar with some of our current fundraising initiatives such as the reusable bag campaign, this would be a new event for us. Some of the concepts, it's a family fun, friendly event and you can see here just some of the seating and concepts we have, we have signage and a kids' activity area, some cornholes, some face paintings, some balloon animals, that kind of thing. We have 10, we're hoping to have 10 food trucks, you can see some of the food trucks that are interested in joining us on that day already, two bands, some retail vendors, an Island Women tent, two bars, as I mentioned, the kids' activity area, cornhole, and a sponsored tent. The map, if I could, is that at the...
We can pull up.
Okay, great, thank you, sorry about that. So, here's what we're thinking about, if you can see the food trucks would line up alongside there, it's the FT, we'd have our band, of course, in the center, we're VIP on the island there, these were the vendor tents, as you can see with the Vs, the bar near the band and then also one down the way there near the kids' activity. We actually hope to do the kids' activities on the, in front of the second entrance so we can keep the flow of the people going through the food trucks there. And then, we're not blind to the fact that this is going to be in the middle of a hurricane season, so we are hoping that we can get on your calendar for backup weather dates of September 26th, which is also another Sunday, but we will also be obtaining all the necessary insurances and all of that jazz, so. And that's, that's it. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, otherwise we really appreciate your time and consideration for this event.
I don't have any questions, gentlemen, do you have any questions?
I love food trucks, we should do more events, keep them rocking it.
Well, it's like a great event to me as long as Tim's got to figure it out.
Absolutely, so we met and we did go through the event committee process with Island Women. Normally, we don't have new events during, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, but just such a crazy year that we've had, a lot of things have been canceled, we were all for it from a staff perspective, so it's a go with the, with the town.
Only have one question, is there, and it's really for staff, I assume there's no problem getting the trucks in and out of there, no, no concerns about...
No, I mean, and we've worked with the Ops guys during that meeting and they assured us that they're comfortable with that, so we feel like it would be, it would be a good fit, yeah.
I, I do have a question.
Sure, yes.
Projections appear that our beach communities can be even busier this summer than we probably have been. If we're honest with ourselves, it's been indicating itself the past month and a half. So, if our community gets that big because of our visitors and our residents, what's the thought process on how you would space that out so people feel comfortable amongst that mass?
Due to COVID, just the amount of...
Because you also have that parking lot there on the side, that if need be, you could structure something so everyone's comfortable, maybe make it strictly walking so that frees up that parking.
That's a, it's a very good question and something we would definitely take under advisement, I don't have a great answer for you right now, but something we would consider. We, we anticipated about 1,000 people, which is what we're allowed to do currently, but I definitely understand your concern and would certainly think about ways to space things out.
The reason I say that is that the Island Men's Mac and Cheese Fest, they'd expect 3,000 people to show up at that one time and if we were to just randomly assume that an awesome event like that would bring that number, then keep us in the loop so we see how it pans out.
Absolutely, a very good point, we definitely will.
But thank you, I think it's a great idea.
So, right now you're looking at 10, 10 food trucks?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, the more the merrier, I love it.
Great, good, thank you, thank you.
Very good.
I think we need an official vote.
Do you, do you need us to vote on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Island Women food truck event as presented, all in favor?
Thank you so much, really appreciate your time, thank you.
Absolutely, we're looking forward to it.
All right, up next, I'd like to introduce the Island Men.
Can't believe they have the same idea we have.
And you know, I was about to say, and, and forgive me for not recognizing our former mayor, Bob Lewis, thank you for being here, I was kind of, look at you, when your mask on, it's kind of hard to tell people. And I'm sure the Island Women can get some volunteers from the Island Men as well. Go ahead, guys.
So, we're here tonight to talk about a couple of things, I sent everyone an email with my presentation and with our calendar, so there shouldn't be any surprises on it, but the Island Men are here to present the opportunity for residents and visitors alike to pleasure and participate in a fun patriotic event sponsored by the Island Men. First of all, if we get started, that was an amazing presentation, ladies, and the Island Men pledge to help you pay for that, for all your signs.
It's on record.
Well, with, with council's help, you know, we had a lot of different events over the past year and I'm here to tell you that we made our budget and that our, our giving will not be influenced because of COVID because we were very conservative in our budget. We made our budget and we're, we've already given to each Girl Scout troop on the island already and we'll continue with this pledge that we just made to them. So, the Island Men are proposing an independent state patriotic golf cart Palooza, notice it's not a, it's not a parade because the governor says no parades. That's right, to go along with our successful, our other successful previous golf cart events, the Halloween Golf Cart Rally and the Holiday Golf Cart Extravaganza in Carolina Beach and Currie Beach, these events were very successful, fun, and we organized them and they were safe events for everyone and we made some money, but I think most of all, people had fun. Residents of this island had fun doing all of the golf cart parades, some people told me they liked it better than other parades that they've seen, so we kind of built on that and said, if you go online, some of the biggest events in the country are golf cart, July 4th parades. So, working with the, with the people on the island, specifically Publix, they were concerned about us doing it on the 3rd or the 4th and we understood that, I'm sure the town would understand that too, as many people are going to be here. So, we're proposing that Thursday, July 5th, late afternoon, sometimes between 4:00 and 6:00, we would leave the Publix parking lot, we have their permission, we have their blessing, and we will promote it the same as we did in the past. We, we think we'll have up to 100 patriotic, non-political golf carts participate in the parade. We do a similar route, we may make some adjustments on it, but a similar route as the previous golf cart parades.
The other thing, we propose to have it done, it'll be completed before, any type of activities that Thursday night, in case the town plans to do some, or the chamber plans to do some activities, but I understand fireworks are going to be on Friday, we thought Thursday would be a good time, just kind of kick off whatever they're going to do for the weekend and try not to interrupt the major traffic Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
So, so did you say July 5th?
It's back to 1st.
July 1st?
I said 5th.
Yeah, he said 5th.
That's okay.
1st. Thursday, the 1st. So, and we do a fairly good job of promoting our events, I know y'all see them on all the social media, so the Halloween event, we, Bob and I were shocked, we're the executors of whatever, administrators of our website, we had 36,000 people see our posts. I'm going to ask anyone in the room, guess how many we had for the last Christmas extravaganza?
2 million.
76,000 people saw our Christmas, that's where all the crowds came from, 76,000 people saw our posts on Facebook and on other, other social media, so we do a pretty good job about that. So, what are we asking for the city? Same as the other two, three events that we had, some, a short period of time of police escorts to shut down Lake Park so we can leave the Publix parking lot and then at the other end of Lake Park, short time shutdown so that we can cross and get to the boardwalk, that's what we're asking. So, we thank you for your support on this, we think this might be our biggest golf cart Palooza ever to be held in Carolina Beach, of course, it will be the only one that ever be held in Carolina Beach. Do you have any, any questions whatsoever?
I do, what time, I'm sorry, what time is it, are you going to have the parade?
4:00 and 6:00. In the afternoon. Late afternoon.
So, so how do you define a short time?
Well, the last ones we had, all, all came in there under an hour or 10 minutes.
No, you mean shutting down Lake Park?
Yes, yes.
It was like less than 15 minutes, 15 minutes or so.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. The success of those golf cart things were during the town's off-season. So, again, the same question I proposed is that if this event is something we're realistically we're doing for the happiness of our community, for our country, then I, this is just a thought, why not move it to the Wednesday? Typically, our community, if you run a business or anything, Thursday is what bangs everything for that weekend, that's a huge travel day. So, our community really starts off that day because there's only three huge holidays that really affect this talent and that's number one. So, if it's something for the community, just an idea, that Wednesday, then you freeze up traffic, our people know, hey, this is our day because we're about to get wild with it.
Yeah, we're not against that, I think we can, we can play with those next, we really want to make it so that people who live here aren't burdened either, so. If you have people coming in, visitors coming in and we have major traffic that we normally have just getting home from work, we didn't, we didn't want to put that back in the back of some of these people.
So, your first, your first two events were extremely successful?
They were.
And, and the community just absolutely loved it, right? I, I, I do have a concern being the beginning of July, because we see how busy it is right now and do I think it can work? I do, but I, am I concerned? I am a little bit personally. I mean, it's, it's crazy, right? I mean, July...
Yeah, and, and I agree, that's my only concern as well, I mean, you know how traffic does back up over the bridge, so you're talking 15, are you going to cross Lake Park twice or you're going to have to travel down Lake Park?
No.
Well, we'd cross Lake Park, travel down, pass from, from Publix all the way down to basically the same old...
I know that's going to be a big check-in, dang.
The Harper Avenue.
We turned on Harper, went up to the neighborhoods and then came back down Cape Fear and the police helped us get across Cape Fear and it was less than 15 minutes probably each way.
Is it possible, just another random idea that I... Is it possible, just another random idea that I just was thinking of, what about if you come out of Publix and you make a left on St. Joseph? Go all the way around, you pass traffic under the bridge, you cut on a Dow for not even a quarter mile to get onto Harper. Then you go down Seventh or Sixth to cut through Carolina Sands, then you're not really affecting any of that. Then you come back and cut through, it, it, it's not a great idea because everyone's secluded to that area.
Problem is the speed limit, forty-five miles an hour, no golf cart limit speed limit, right?
That's right.
Quarter mile, we have top assistance for.
Plus golf carts, I mean, battery life.
Yeah, the battery life is an issue because we had lost a lot of them.
Right, I remember that.
Going all the way to Carolina Sands and down and around, we lost probably a third of them.
Yeah.
So, we're also going to maximize the number of people, the number of people and yards that they have. And I live on St. Joseph and I love it, but there's not that many yards that people can go by.
So, yeah, you guys know when you proposed the first one, my concern was all around public safety, right? I mean, that was really, and, and I commend you guys because I think the first two events that you had like this, you said, I think you may have even said in that meeting, give us, give us a shot. And I, I think you proved, uh, two times over that you can do these fairly safety, safely. So my only real question would be, did staff have any issues from the Police Department, Public Safety officials about what they're trying to do? Was, was any noted?
No, the last two events we didn't, and it really, there's very little burden on town staff besides the Police Department. I don't know how busy, I can't anticipate how busy it'll be on that island that day if, if Chief Griffin has questions about fire. But it was just generally, the police were the only town services that they needed, really. If we could alleviate that, Publix to Harper, I think that's the, probably going to be your biggest hiccup. Because coming from Cape Fear over to the boardwalk is, is really nothing. But trying to get from Publix to Harper might be, but it worked well before.
Yeah.
So I mean, we had no complaints, we had nothing but positive things from, from the last two.
I'm going to defer that, I, I have the same concerns, I think we're all giving you the same concerns, but I'm going to defer that to the Public Safety guys and, and, and look to the chief to speak up if he has issues and work with you guys. If he feels like you need to move your route.
I mean, we have, we have our.
He knows this way better than, than I do.
We have another events committee on Tuesday. If you want to hold off and, and put it to, I don't know if that's okay with, does that mess you guys up, Bob? Waiting?
I think you guys have done a phenomenal job and it's great for the community. My only hesitation is the same, is you know, how much traffic will back up if we close Lake Park? And, and you know how it's been the last two weeks. I can tell you, we've had one of the highest record-setting marches that we've had in years. So I can't imagine what July is going to be like.
You put all the extra parking out there.
That's right, that's right, just parking.
So, so how many golf carts are you talking about?
It could be, we think it could be a hundred.
Yeah.
Maximum we had before was eighty.
Right, right.
Was our Christmas one, but.
Christmas, we had eighty-four carts. And as, as same is with them, we have a waiver and we include the city of Carolina Beach in the waiver and that passed your legal department. And one of our members is a five hundred dollar an hour lawyer, or six hundred dollar an hour lawyer, and wrote it. So I trust that it's real written, well-written and, you know, we will, we will include that in our.
Yeah, I think the coordination with the Police Department at this time is, 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 it's different than the first.
That's my only concern at all. And I trust staff to minimize any time on Lake Park.
Well, Lee, Bob, I, you know me, I love, I, I think they were amazing.
Oh, they are amazing.
My, I said my piece, I, I think that Wednesday for, but I love the idea, you have hundreds of hundred, you guys, it's.
I think that whole week's going to be crazy, honestly.
It's already crazy.
I mean, it's been backed up to, I mean, even during the week, spring break, we were backed up to Mucka Junction. On and off the bridge, which was crazy.
Appreciate what you guys do.
At the same time, I think we gave you some information, we're planning a number of events as COVID kind of is getting in and the vaccinations get there. We're hoping to have those, because the Dragon Boat Event, we're still planning to have in September. And then we also have a couple of other things going in the year. We wanted you to know that you probably heard about Step Up Soldiers is closing their stores, but they're doing some other things for veterans. At the same time, they're kind of partnering, letting us take over the barbecue cook-off, bring it back to Carolina Beach. So next year, so next year we'll probably come back, we'll come back before that timeframe and talk to you about it.
But we'd also like to get those dates on the calendar now, it's March 25th and 26th. I mean, that's how far, not.
March 25th, next year?
Yeah.
Yes, next year.
Wow.
That's how far we're looking now.
For the barbecue.
Yeah, that's the barbecue.
That's when they normally hold it, that weekend, that's where.
We are, we've already got the dates established for the Halloween Golf Cart Rally, for the Christmas Extravaganza, those are all in the email that I sent to you. December, October 23rd, December 11th, December 12th. Miss Pleasure Island, we are working with Fort Fisher and getting that field with the open stage. Do a Miss Pleasure Island in October.
Outside?
Outside with Island Women. We wouldn't have restrictions on the number of people there and we've already met with them once and they're open to the, to the concept. They're kind of, they want to have some rules for the talent.
Yeah.
Or lack thereof. So, also, we'll be working every fireworks event for the North End, doing all the safety for the North End. Every Wednesday night, we sweep the beach mats for Kevin and his, his group, we clean them. So, and then, and bringing the barbecue back to the beach, that's going to be a big event for the town. And Jim from Step Up Soldiers, he's already agreed to give us all the names, all the entrance, all the people that participated, how they did it. And we believe we can do it as good as they could, if not bigger. So, appreciate your time then.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you guys, you guys do great stuff.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, Mayor Pierce, are we going to, are we giving them conditional, are we going to vote on conditional approval, assuming the chief's okay? Or do you want them to come back, do we want them to come back with the chief?
I am looking at Bruce for that answer.
You could, could vote on the condition that the Police Department clears it.
Yeah.
Or coordinates.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And we'll do that at our events committee on Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, as presented with consent of first responders.
So we, so we need to make a motion to approve, okay, I'll make a motion to approve their golf cart, whatever name they use this time.
Palooza.
Palooza, thank you, for the Fourth of July, conditional on the Police Department's approval.
Okay, motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Your motion was for the First of July, not for the last day of June.
Uh, for the proper day in July, whatever, I don't know which day. I, I would go to the Police Chief, please answer me that very question.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, up next, as you've noticed, we've had several filming projects the last couple of months. We have one more that we're, staff is working on a permit for. I'd like to introduce Mr. Brandon Gertz. He is working with Netflix on this latest project and I will let him get started.
Thank you guys for your time and your consideration.
It was Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Welcome to Carolina Beach?
Thank you.
See the family feel?
Yeah, well.
And you're starting out in black and white, so you're, you're behind already.
Yeah, you got it, we'll get to the color ones here in a second. And Tim, just for my benefit, I'm, I'm just cycling through with this right button or?
Just the right.
Okay.
Welcome to our community.
Uh, so yeah, my name's Brandon Gertz and I actually live in Wilmington, North Carolina, I live off Carolina Beach Road in Sunset Park. So, I've been here since about 2009 and I bought my house there in 2015, but I have not been working in this state for over six years. I've been on the road, traveling, working in Georgia, South Carolina, Florida, Louisiana, every other place but home. So, it's with great honor that I'm standing here today.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And that, that is the, kind of one of the themes of this entire project, is that we are hoping to bring this project here into the area and successfully pull off the project and be able to establish the, the continuation of the film industry that we've had here for over forty years. And in that right, it's with, with great honor that I'm here to be able to speak to you guys about this project. It's a coming-of-age love story that is focused on a teenage couple, so it's a teenage coming-of-age love story. And the main character, Auden, is, she grows up in a strict household and has had a kind of repressed lifestyle. And so she hasn't done much, she hasn't played Connect Four, she's never played Putt Putt, she's never been to do a lot of things that other people have done. She travels to go visit her dad's side of the family for the summer and she goes to a beautiful beach town that kind of opens her world to what's different from what it was in the past. Takes her out of her comfort zone and in that place, she finds a boy who is a little bit more adventurous, he's a BMX biker. They fall in love and he convinces her to go out on a quest list to take on some of the things that she's never accomplished or done in her life to kind of bring her that. So that's, you know, the general basis of the story and its focus. And so ultimately, I knew right away we would want to be down in this area because it has the look and feel and also the types of environments and types of looks that they're looking for, for this particular project. So yeah, just got a couple of photos here, you know, this is our permit and all the information of our dates and filming activity. But obviously Carolina Beach Boardwalk, the boardwalk plays a special place in the story for where she goes to read every day and she ends up meeting the boy out there after seeing him several different times. So, it's an important piece of, of where this will be. The scuba shop and Melissa's Point Laundry kind of play two pivotal locations. And the scuba shop, which we'll be converting into what is kind of like a speakeasy pie shop. A local gentleman in the town owns a lot of different properties in the area, one of them being the laundromat. And he builds in a secret pie shop that only the locals know about, they, they go to, to have a nice cup of coffee or a piece of pie. So, the, that's kind of what we're looking at at these places. North End Java Shop is, plays our Beach Beans, which is a popular coffee shop in the story. And some of the characters travel between that to different locations that feature as, as the main character's houses. Naughty Dog, we're talking with them as well for what is the local fast food restaurant and, and a popular hotspot for all the locals to go to. Pleasure Island, we were talking to them about the bike shop, which is an important place where the main character works. And then we have several residents that will be using, also Nest Realty, we're talking with them about converting that into a boutique where the four main girls work at. For a majority of the movie, that's where they're, they're working their summer jobs. So, these are just some more of the, of the locations that we're, we just wanted to show kind of where we're planning or what we think some of the, the areas will look like, you know, once we get them on film. Havana's Restaurant, Carolina Smokehouse, the downtown Carolina Beach area. There's a lot of different places that we're liking to, or looking to film and, and really capture the beauty, the essence. And, and, and use that as, as what is kind of the setting for this, for this environment that helps grow the character. All story stuff aside, I, A, coming from Wilmington, want to make sure that this goes smoothly for the public first and foremost. That's my job as a location manager, is A, to provide the director what they want for the script and the scene work, but more importantly, to make sure that I take every measure possible to mitigate all risks and concerns. Work with the homeowners, business owners, neighbors, to make sure that they're aware of the process, what will be entailed, so that they're aware of the, what the process would be like and not caught off guard by some activity that they were not previously aware of. And in addition to that, like I said, wanting to rebuild the industry here, it's an important focus for us. And, and also knowing how busy Carolina Beach gets at this time of year, moving into these beach months, moving up towards Memorial Day. It's been my focus from the very get-go to get out here as early as possible, talk to all the business owners, talk to the people we're working with, talk with Tim, talk with the Police Department, try to figure out what plans would work and which ones would be more problematic. And then to try to develop our schedule based off of that, which is what we, we tried to do, is try to execute most of the places that we were concerned about how our impact would be as early in the schedule as possible. Allowing us to try to get some of the beach work here and in Curry Beach, Fort Fisher, out of the way. And then accomplish some of our scenes that we have in Wilmington proper, Oak Island and Bolton, that will be a little bit less impact to, to the activity that would normally be going on in this area. So, that being said, we've also included some overheads that kind of go over a daily breakdown of where we'll be looking to be and go. This here is our first day of filming, Wednesday, April 21st. And for instance, one of the things that is beneficial about a movie that has so many locations like this one does, is that we're not necessarily in one particular space for too long. We do have two locations that we'll be at for an extended amount of days. But for the most part, a lot of our filming days, we're, we're placed for four hours, we move to somewhere else for about three hours, and then we're moved to another place for about five hours. So, we are kind of moving along between the locations, even with inside of a daytime, to minimize the impact. And, and be able to, to accomplish the scene work without causing a whole lot of disturbance to the businesses. And for instance, this being the first day up, we've done a lot of legwork. In fact, we know every business owner that is in the downtown business area, we've had communications with them about the type of filming activity that could possibly happen. And as of yesterday, I had three individuals go down there and drop off letters with every business, talking about the dates and times. We're not just the first day of filming, but our second day of filming that would have a little bit of filming out towards the boardwalk area. So we wanted to know when and where we would be and also to talk to them about what we could do to mitigate the kind of impact that we would have to their normal business goers. All of them are very excited about the process and, and really eager to have us here and have us back in town. But that being said, we have, this is the April 22nd date where we'll be moving from our bike, bike shop area. We'll shoot a scene there for the beginning of the day, we'll move out to the north end of the boardwalk, there's one scene that they want to get overlooking the bench, looking towards the water. And then we'll move back into the alleyway a little bit more towards the evening and shoot a shot of the main character walking down the boardwalk alleyway. And then return back to the board, bike shop after night has fallen to do an interior shot inside their garage, which is the bike shop repair area proper. I, I don't know if you guys really want me to go through every senior location, but I'm really happy to do that, I just don't want to waste too much of your time.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Have you spoke, again, the same question we asked the last one, is that have you spoke with our Police Chief or our Fire Chief to make sure they're capable of what's happening next Wednesday and Thursday?
Yes, sir, we had.
They did come to the events committee meeting, police was represented, so they, we're working with them, so they're coordinating.
And if I'm a hundred percent for you, you don't have to show it, though, I think it's great what you guys do. It's been a while since you guys come back to North Carolina, so glad this is it.
Just, just to touch on two of the ones that will be the, probably the biggest or longest-term impact, Nest Realty playing the boutique, we'll have four days of filming. And being that it's right there on Cape Fear Boulevard, I know this is a prime spot as far as influx of the downtown traffic going down to that beach area. We do not have any plans for any road closures to deal with the scene work that is accomplished in this scene work. And at this point, none of the scene work has any closures projected. I, I've been limited then to ITC for very small amounts of time. In fact, one of the scenes where we have Beach Beans that's on Carolina Beach Avenue North, I've spread that scene out, it's over a couple of different days. So we don't go down there and we don't have ITC running that one spot for twelve hours. We go down there for three hours of one morning, we get out of there and we go back to a house and we shoot that the rest of the day. And then on another day, we're shooting at the house, we go down there for a few hours in the afternoon, we get out the way. So, I've tried as much as I could to try to help production find a plan that's suitable.
Are you saying there's no road closure on Cape Fear?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So I know there are residents who live in that area that would need to get to their properties.
There's several residents in the, the new condo building that's right above.
I mean, if you're closing Nest and you're filming there, that's between you and them, but the streets are what we care about, just, and access to other properties.
Nest has a loft apartment above their, their property that also is rented out. But yes, we, we're in contact with everybody involved in the area, essentially that's what we try to do is gather as much information about the people that are in close proximity and try to figure out what their concerns are and make sure we can tackle them.
You're not going to have to worry about that, they're going to let you know.
Do you have a slide with the, I see the dates on the various slides, is there one slide that has all the dates on it?
Sure, this breakdown at the beginning, I think, has it good, it might be a little tough to see, we have, at the 22nd, 23rd. So, we essentially start with a few light days in the first early weeks. Our days for the Clementines is May 11th through the 14th. So that's, that's one of our big chunks of, of mainstay in one particular place. The other location that has a lot of continued activity for several days is five days in a row at a property on Carolina Beach Avenue North at 1708. And it's a residential property, major, in fact, most, if not all of the filming is inside the, the property itself.
Yeah, I don't think we care about that, honestly, I mean, I'm not trying to be too direct, but what we care about is any closures to streets or access to other people's properties. That's what I care about.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
And I'm, I'm guessing Tim has already gone over that.
It's all weekdays, sir. And it's all weekdays, right, it's what it looks like.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So traffic would be the other one, if they created, even though the roads open, if they're creating traffic, but it sounds like it's all week.
As long as there's still ingress and egress is my biggest concern. I see all the dates, it's just hard for us to look at this and tell, you know, what you really know.
So I do have, I do have one question. Will the crew be eating local or because of COVID, will they, will you guys have your own?
Well, definitely with our breakfast and lunch, the catering company is a part of the crew just as much as everybody else because they get roped into our turnarounds and have this ready at 4:00 AM and the kind of whims that go along with some of the film industry. But there are certain times where we have additional meals or other things that are brought into set, and that's definitely something that we're working to figure out which, which people will be able to help us contribute to those types of meals. And then for instance, you know, tomorrow, we're going on our tech scout. Basically, for the next two days, I take every department head to all 30 locate, 35-plus locations for the movie. And tomorrow, I've been working with Adele at Havana's, and we're going to do outdoor seating, even though we have COVID measures, I wanted to try to make sure that if we could, we could get something arranged with Havana's to do that, and we're going to do outdoor seating there.
Appreciate that.
And so we've got a 45 or so top going down there tomorrow at 1:00. But yes, sir, basically in any instance or opportunity available, it's something that I like to try to do is try to find local vendors, local caterers, local people that can contribute to what we're trying to do, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I think that's key for future, not necessarily for this project, but for future successes. I think the town has always been open to the filming that's gone on here, and you know, I think it's been well received. During the COVID measures, we did hear some blowback from some of the vendors because everything was so contained, they basically saw very little benefit from it. So anything where you can build bridges and utilize our vendors, I think will help your project, and it will also help with future projects. I think that's where you were heading, right, Jay?
Yes, yes, it was. I mean, it's extremely organized, I mean, you know, Netflix does a great job, period. And I think it's great for our community when we have film crews here, I think it's just fantastic. It's good for our brand.
What's the end, oh, sorry, go ahead. What's the end date? I see June there.
June 4th was, and now June 3rd is our final day of filming. And like I said, a lot of those that after Memorial Day, we're outside of Carolina Beach. We're in Wilmington, Wilmington and Oak Island area as well, and yes, another Wilmington location. So yeah, we're clear of the island. I believe the 28th or the 27th is our last day of filming on Carolina Beach, and that whole week, we're tucked inside the house on the top of the north end. So at that point, we'll have trucks in place, we'll have everything going that whole week. It'll kind of be routine at that point, we'll get all that stuff done out there and then start to wrap out some of the things that are in there.
And I echo my council members' words, we're glad you're bringing this to Carolina Beach. The only thing we don't want to do is impose on other businesses who this is their first season after COVID, you know, to really recoup some of that. So I guess, and I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation at all, I was just trying to, you know, wrap my head around, you know, what all these dates were, like you said. And Tim, is there anything that should red flag us? I know you know where they are, so.
I don't think so. I've been working with Brandon a lot the last couple of weeks, they're very organized. I can't think of a question we haven't hit him with that they haven't had an answer for. I think, you know, like the Cape Fear was, was the only concern I really had where Nest Realty is, but even if there's just intermittent closing while they're setting up trucks, I don't, I don't see it's going to be a big impact, I mean, I don't think it would be a big impact there. I think they have a great plan and it should go off without a hitch.
Well, I know all the other filming that's been going on, and you have been directly involved, and it has went off so smoothly, so I'm assuming you're going to be by the phone and directly involved in this one as well.
I'm trying to get opposite Catherine Zeta Jones on this one, who's in this film, but they got a little too.
Yeah, I would say you're welcome to interrupt me at any time, most people do, if not, I'll talk my head off all day long. And it is something like, in particular, like that is the probably the longest setup that will be in the downtown area constantly. So those neighbors in the vicinity and businesses that are in the vicinity are going to be huge, huge people that we're going to have a good relationship with to make sure it goes smooth for them, so that it goes smooth for you guys as a whole. And, you know, it is a big movie, it is going to be a big experience, it is going to be a big endeavor, it's going to be something that's going to be a little bit more impact than just a high town coming in for one location for one day and moving out, and another thing coming in for one day and moving out. This is something that's really going to be here and kind of get in with the community a lot, in a good way. I mean, right now, we know a lot of people and they're all really excited about working with that process. And as you know, the process is involved and there's a lot of things that go on that we need to try to figure out with everybody involved, you know, and one of those things there, like we're going to potentially, if we have the money, the budget, to do a scene where we make it rain on the outside of Clementines on one of those days that we're filming there on that Friday, which that'll be a busy activity and a lot of stuff going on, but it'll honestly be something where everybody's going to be standing around watching a spray fake water, you know, or real water onto the building. So it's something that, what I'm getting at is that the trade-off for having that much activity and impact with the community is that the community is totally involved with the filming process, they become a part of the movie themselves, they're part of the crew, and they're excited about the movie coming out just as much as anybody else. And we're staying in that area for a longer extended period of time, so the economics of what we're doing in that area sees a lot more hidden to the, to the pockets of this community and to the coffers of this community than if we're just, you know, in and out, in and out. That being said, we're spending a good chunk of time here, we're spending a little bit of time in Curry, a little bit in Fort Fisher, a little bit in Wilmington, but I would say a good 60% of the movie's in Carolina Beach, and it's really the showcase of the story and of the action of a lot of the characters. So, you know, I know it is a big endeavor to have something like this go on, especially at this time of year going right up into Memorial Day, but the burden of work of making sure that this goes well for the people and for Tim and for everybody in the area is on me and on my team, and we take that very seriously. We lose sleep to make sure that other people don't.
Brandon, it feels like we're all on the same page. The only thing we I think have is as long as our concerns are addressed, that I think it's going to be a beautiful relationship to start off and say thanks. As long as those things are, then it seems very well put out.
Thank you.
I'm all for it.
I'm all good.
Hundred percent.
Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
You have any more questions for me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
One of your first slides, you had two events on May 8th, but I don't see it in my packet, can you go back to it so I can see what those two were?
Did we need to approach?
Yeah, I could tell you that, no. The first one, Councilman Garza-
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your presentation, thank you.
The first one's that Surf Dog Experience, that is on the north end, at the North End Pier, it begins at 8:30.
Is that the one that was pushed off from last year?
Uh, no, he did have that event last year as well. So that's 8:30 to 11:30, and then the Street Art Festival is that same Saturday from 10 to 4:00. Yeah, I don't like to do simultaneous events, but I think this will work fine with one at the north end.
Can you go back to that image of the-
Oh, sure.
It just made me think of a few questions. How's that layout going to be, is it along that or are you stretching it to the parking lot or?
Um, as far as I know, I believe the CB Street Arts Festival is going to be very similar to what you see at the Farmer's Market.
Okay. Appreciate it.
When does the Farmer's Market start?
Farmer's Market starts-
Oh, no. Never mind, never mind, I didn't answer that.
Goes through the middle of October.
Come on, Hollywood, you got this.
Oh, my goodness.
Sounds soon.
You can let us know.
I will.
I hope Paul's not watching this.
As I walk out that door.
Second week in May.
I think it's something.
Yeah, it is the second week in May.
Second week in May, right?
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, town council members, appreciate it.
Tim, you've been doing a good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We know you're doing a good job because nobody's complaining, so, thank you. And other things. Managers updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. First, you know, we had the vaccination site at the rec center yesterday was a big success. We don't have the total numbers, but it was steady, I know we had up to 30 people in an hour at one point, so I think we had a lot of people get vaccinated yesterday and they'll come back in three weeks to get the second shot. First update I have for you is a legislative update, our work with Representative McIntyre and Warden Smith and the Ferguson Group. They're still working closely with Congressman Rousher and our senators and others working on getting some federal money for beach nourishment. They are cautiously optimistic that we can get some appropriations from OMB off some management budget that we didn't get earlier this year, so they're working diligently on that. He also brought to me some information on the community project funding. We've talked about earmarks are legal again in Congress and they're working on that, and we're putting together, we went through a whole bunch of projects with them to discuss which ones were viable, and the one that was the most viable and we're working hardest on is some improvements to the lake park. We went through some, we gave them the master plan, worked through what things we could come up with. There's only up to a certain amount of money you can get, or you have to spend, and there's a certain amount you can get, and then the total amount you've got to spend with, that you match within 12 months. So we dialed back what we're trying to do this year to include the matching money for the playground that we've already applied for a grant, so that would be the other part of the match, a new restroom at the lake, and the location of the restroom would alter the picnic shelter, so we'd need a new picnic shelter. So that's what we're putting in for, he's working with us closely, we're finalizing that, and I believe I have a letter from the mayor to sign on that project.
When's the deadline for that?
Well, tomorrow is when we got to have that into him, he's been working, it's a, because it's just all happened like this, through Congress approved it, and he's working that. We gave him a list of, from water projects to all that, and we went through them all and what the total amount of money was, total match, and the timeframe we could do it, and this is one of the ones we could do it. But this should be an ongoing cycle, so we should be able to apply for more things next year and be better prepared to come up with a better layout of what we really want to get done next year.
It's X amount of projects per dollar per 12 months?
Yeah, each congressman gets 10 projects that they can apply or try to get earmarked for.
What I meant is, what if we happen to have another project that we could do during that same timeframe, like stuff at Mike Chapel, like that bathroom with the sheds, right? If it's something we're going to do anyways, we can match to match that, and now we may have something better anticipated.
Yeah, we definitely could look at it that way, too, yeah. So that's the legislative update, he's continued to work on the Matsu issues and our other issues, we're working with him on, so it's-
So if we, if we do get the federal funding, is this year still feasible or is it pushed out to next year?
For the, for the beach nourishment?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, they're moving forward with the designs, the engineering specs to move forward beach nourishment, it all comes down to funding. So we're moving forward as if we're getting the funding.
Okay.
Well, there's finding the funds ourselves with our partners, or putting it off for another year, and you know, that's the option we don't want.
Right.
That is one.
So I was over at the rec center yesterday about 3:00, and at that time, I think they had over 200 people that got vaccinated, so that was a, that's a big, that's a big win for this town, so that's a great job right there.
Next thing I want to discuss with you, with council about, is the Hamlet Ocean Rescue Public Restroom Facility. As you know, we put out a design build last year, came in more than we wanted to, we held off thinking building costs would go down, so we rebid the project. Building costs didn't go down, they went up. So we've been doing some value engineering, and we were getting ready to put out the bid, it's going to cost some money to rebid it again, but we wanted it just run by council because we made some engineering, value engineering decisions that will have to be reengineered to be put out for bid. And before we did, we just want to give council, and this is one of the renderings of, I don't know if this is the final rendering, but what we're doing doesn't really affect the vision or the appearance too much, it does bring it down to grade, so we'd have to flood proof it where this is an elevated structure. It, just wanted council's take before we do that, we expect this new value engineered where we, you know, cut back on things, will probably come back in as much if not more than the last thing we bid out. So we are, just want to get council's input whether to continue the value engineering or do we want to go back to what we originally were looking for, just take a chance on bidding that because we don't think materials have gone down any, if not, so.
I guess the two questions I have is, does it meet the needs for Chief? And what's that gap of the pay? Because it has been a year and a half that we've pushed this off, and those are the two factors that would be key.
I think both of them would meet the basic needs, I think we all would prefer, think this, the original design is a better functioning and a better aesthetics, but it will cost more, we don't know how much, because we haven't gotten engineer to do it, the value engineering, you know, we're talking about reducing materials, getting rid of the elevated structure, things like that, we don't know how much it'll reduce, but it would reduce. But then we didn't want to provide something that council's not pleased with and the citizens aren't pleased with.
Couldn't tie this into the last thing?
Yeah, well, we are with the, you know, still talking infrastructure bill, and we're, Warden Smith and Ferguson Group are eyeing that for us, too, any, any projects we can attach to.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
We're looking for, or if we find other projects that will free up money for these projects.
But to answer your question, I mean, I'm fine with a valued engineered design.
I like the word choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bruce, my-
No, you're fine, you're good.
We always want things as cheap as possible, right? I mean, and we see your, at least I'll speak myself, I see your staff trying to cut those things down. My concern here is if you continue to reengineer, do you end up with less than what you need to do the job right? Right? So I don't want to say, hey, I support you spending more money, but at the same time, you need, I would encourage you to target the design that you need to perform the job properly first. And if that costs a couple more dollars, then it's just going to cost a couple more dollars in my mind. I don't think we're talking many, many thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars different, we're talking about, so that would be my two cents, is let's make sure we're getting what serves our town appropriately first, and then we'll, we'll take it from there.
Did you just echo me?
Pretty much. Johnny and you and I always echo each other.
I mean, and Bruce, I agree, I mean, we've waited this long, we might as well get what we need. I mean, nobody can predict when the building prices are going to go down, but I know you're not going to start this until the fall at least.
Right, right.
So, you know, I'll just defer to you and the Chief on that.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's the direction I need, thank you. Last thing I have is the pack it in, pack it out, you know, we've been ongoing with that. Our Public Works crews will tell you it's been a success on their part outside of the boardwalk, on the other beach accesses they've seen.
Let's clarify that.
Yeah, outside of the boardwalk.
For the public.
Yeah, not the boardwalk.
The boardwalk area is like it's always has been.
Yeah, it is.
We did not remove anything.
Lots of trash, yeah, we haven't removed any trash cans, and there's still a lot of trash there. There's more trash there than there is where we don't have trash cans, because there's a lot more people there, but we have found there's been less trash at the beach accesses than in the past when they've done their sweeps and coming through to change cans, and the rollout cans have been pretty empty. We are adding additional stickers to the cans, we're adding more signage, thanks to Sheila, she's come up with some really nice brochures, we're going to provide all the hotels and property managers, we've looked at possible magnets and different things we do to just promote pack it in, pack it out, but we are seeing a success. We are hearing about the complaints on the boardwalk, but, but that's not where pack it in, pack it out is-
On Sheila's piece, by the way, I did get forward to me, I think she sent out an email to, maybe it was a short-term rental list, I can't remember exactly what this that was, but that, obviously, when you send something out, it comes right back and we see it anyway, we hear from them anyway, and that was very well received. I think they, they were appreciative, at least the person that reached out to me was very appreciative that the town was including them in that process and communication, and at least this one was very willing to participate.
So my take is, I think it's, I think it's working, I truly do. I mean, it's a, it's an educational piece with, with our residents and the people that visit here, and the only thing I can recommend right now is if we can get our beach umbrella and chair folks to maybe put a bag with the umbrella, I think it would be awesome, you know.
Or at least a communication of some sort.
Right. And, and our lifeguards, whenever they start, you know, give them 20 to 30 bags and, and have them, you know, kind of monitor it. But I think it's been a big, big win. I was out there, I walked 10 blocks yesterday and it was, the only thing I did see is that people still have the automatic action of walking up there like there's a trash can up there. And, um, they don't have, they don't have a bag, so.
I, uh.
More bags we get out there, the better.
I like that idea. I, tying a Jay's idea real quick is every year, most businesses renew their business license. Maybe we amend our wording that says, part of your business license says you have X amount of the CB bags with your, because it's beneficial for them, it's beneficial for us. I had a conversation with the resident and we were speaking about this openly. So the education piece, we're doing a lot for what we can for these pieces and a possible idea is what if we had two or three volunteers with shirts that just randomly walk the beach on weekends and, uh, and, because we were trying to gauge and imagine an interaction if you're on the beach and somebody walks up to you and says, hey, make sure you keep your stuff and take it out. Then you're like, man, that's kind of intrusive, that's what's up with that. But if you volunteers, welcome to our community, we're very proud of this. We do a pack it in, pack it out, here's a bag, I hope you enjoy your time, sorry for interrupting, because then that ice break of an interaction, they're going to recall that and that memory piece is always going to be, they loved us as coming to their community and then they gave out bags.
I think we've had that conversation with the mayor about beach ambassadors that other towns have done that would be a great program of having volunteers who promote those and the other rules on the beach without, without being confrontational and also promoting the town itself.
Yeah.
Are we still going to be getting signs that go on the other side?
Yeah, I think, yes.
Yes, sir? Thank you.
And so I just want to make a comment to Sheila, you've done a great job. I'm copied on those emails as a hotel owner and I think you're on top of it, she's doing a phenomenal job, great idea. I mean, you picked the right person to put on that, so very good, uh, good job Sheila. And, um, and just to the public, just a comment, when you're full, you're full. So when all the hotels and all the vacation rentals are full, it doesn't matter if it's March or April, it's not going to be any busier in July. So if every, so the last couple of weeks that we've seen here in Carolina Beach is very predictive probably of the rest of the summer. So if the, if the last couple of weeks have gone fairly well, we've got a learning curve now to know where we need to focus, which is on that boardwalk, so.
So I had a couple of comments on, on that. First, I was lucky enough to get away, uh, which we, my family hasn't been able to do for a while and it's interesting, once you start this program, every beach or town you go to, you see how they handle trash. I visited a number of places that are doing pack it in, pack it out, um, and there are no, I'm not suggesting we do this, but there are no trash cans anywhere. Not, not just not on the beach, but there aren't even any on this side. It is truly you take it with you. And if that can work, surely this can work. So I'm still pretty confident. To the public, I don't know what to tell people about social media, but you have social media campaigns out there posting pictures of trash cans that are not even in this town.
Right.
Um, I think it's doing a disservice to the community. If you see legitimate concerns, I would ask you to bring them to the town manager. They're not perfect, they'll work with you and we'll get those things resolved, but a little patience. Um, the other thing I had on pack, pack it in, pack it out, Bruce, was we, as we talked about, was the downtown business district and the boardwalk area obviously has been a little rough, but we've also seen with the private parking lots, even though they are not operating, uh, even though they are not collecting fees because they can't buy ordinance, they are operating. And by ordinance, they are supposed to have trash cans and daily trash service. So when you look at that area, we have dropped, I am just making up a number here, 500 to 1,000 more people in that area with no trash service being provided by the, or at least it doesn't appear to me, I should say. Doesn't appear to me to be providing trash service. Do we know if those parking lots are providing trash service or not as they're required to?
I believe there are cans, I don't believe they're being serviced daily like they will have or required to be once they start charging for parking.
Maybe we check into that.
Yeah, so I, and Jeremy's been working on the potential ordinance changes that would address that, that would require some parking and other requirements year round for parking lots.
Yeah, I, I think if they are operating, I don't care whether they're charging or not. If you are filling your lot with cars, you have a responsibility to deal with the trash.
Good point.
That's my two cents. Because a lot of that is, I mean, we just put, as Mayor Pierce said, we, we're full and then you put more people in that area and now guess what? We have a trash problem and it's not a pack it in, pack it out problem, we have a trash problem.
Right.
So that's my two cents on that. I encourage you guys to keep pushing. You told us when you started this that, I think, right, I think you said this is going to be a two-year process and the first year will be just educational. So just want you to know, at least from my standpoint, we're still supporting, I'm still supporting.
Absolutely.
I'd like to, uh, for, for people listening, if you don't mind, give you a quick history of this because I've been fortunate enough to be a piece of this. Uh, four years ago, I joined the Freeman Park Committee. A lot of our residents didn't know that Freeman Park, when we took it over, was always a pack it in, pack it out. So the Freeman Park Committee got really amped about, we need to make this not only Freeman Park, but the whole entire strand. And here it is four years later panning out to where after the research, yeah, two to three years, it's going to be amazing. And I think sometimes for any of them listening, thank you, because that was a fight that they started to try to push.
One more thing on the parking in the boardwalk area, we did have a malfunctioning trash compactor over the past weekend that, so they couldn't put as much trash in there, it wasn't compacting, so we had some issues. But we're also having some people who are using it without authorization to use that and we are going to put some signage and possibly camera up to catch people who are not, who are using the, the trash cans for the businesses, so we can monitor that closer to. That'll help. That's all I have.
Yeah.
Well, okay. Any questions for Bruce?
I, I have one I wanted to bring up that I probably shouldn't, but I'm going to anyway. And this is really for the fire chief and, and for you, Bruce. It's easy to get misquoted in the media, I understand that, I've been misquoted plenty of times, but for the public, I would just like to hear from you guys a couple, answer a couple of questions. And chief, you may want to answer these or you, Bruce, I don't know who wants to answer. Can you give us a breakdown of your timeline of your response to the Paradise Cove fire? Do you mind doing that? Just, just, just the highlights?
Just to, um, get some clarity, are you wanting timelines of the response?
The response, what time did you get called, what time did you show up?
So, um, the, the call came into 911 at 12:59. We received the 911 dispatch at 1 o'clock. Uh, our first unit arrived at 1:04. Actually, three engines pulled up simultaneously.
And what, what's, what's, what's the goal? I mean, what, what would be great response in your time, in your view?
That, that's probably as fast as we could turn that out. I mean, the guys get the call, we, we require them during the day. Um, we, we like to see a, a one-minute turnout, a minute and a half tops. At night, we, we look at two minutes or less, that means they're in a bunk room asleep. The ability for four of them to go down and get on an engine, fully dressed, um, and head out the door. So, uh, like I said, to get that call at 1300 and, and arrive at, at 13:04, uh, fully dressed and, and pulling hand lines, straight in the fighting fire, so that it was, I don't think you could get it any better.
It's amazing.
Next, it is amazing. Next, next question for you, chief, if you don't mind. Tell us who participated in the investigation of this fire with you, just the organizations?
Okay, so, um, at the fire, we, uh, had a command post brought in from this county, um, it's actually part of the hospital system, the EMS system. So they brought in a command post and we immediately, I had, uh, the town manager, the mayor, um, police chief, myself, uh, went into that vehicle and we kind of talked about what had happened. Um, this is right at the end of the fire. And at that point, we went ahead and made su- made sure everybody understood their roles. Um, under general statute for a fire, the, the fire chief has a general statute requirement that they have to do a cause and termination on every fire. So it always starts with us as a lead and if it becomes criminal, we, we involve the PD. But in, in these cases, we start off in the beginning together, it only makes sense. Um, and, uh, as we were gathering our notes and dividing up who was going to start doing interviews and, you know, who was on scene, the interviews on scene, things like that, uh, the SBI showed up, which is pretty typical for a commercial or large fire, and they fell right into it. So from the very beginning, um, fire had the lead, PD assisted us and SBI was there, so we pretty much went into it all holding hands. We went through what we could do that night and then it got dark, so we put a police officer on the scene, we held the scene all night, roped off and we started back at daylight or 8 o'clock in the morning, we met back out there. And at that point, ATF was involved. So when we started the actual on-scene investigation, um, it was fire, police, uh, SBI and ATF.
So to finish up this and you'll see where I'm going, Bruce, have you received anything from any state fire marshal, SBI, ATF, any of those guys indicating in any way that we were not, uh, that we were violating protocol in any way?
No, nothing.
So the only reason I brought that up, chief, was just to make a long-winded point that you're doing a hell of a job.
Thank you.
And I wanted the public to hear that. Thank you for, for everything.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, uh, chief, and I think what you're hearing here from, from council and definitely you and I have discussed is we stand behind you 100%. You know, we know you guys have done a phenomenal job, you know, my son was a resident of that building, that is very, um, personal to me and, um, fire department has been very near and dear to my heart since I moved to Carolina Beach. Some of my first friends that I made were on their fire department in Carolina Beach, so, um, uh, you've got a great history of the tragedies that we've had here and so, um, again, we support you and, and let your, um, staff know that, your people.
And I appreciate it and, you know, the, I've, I've got 28 years in the fire service and no, no stranger to fire, obviously. My deputy chief's 28, 29 years and he is a certified fire investigator with State of North Carolina, which is high as you can go. Um, and the captain that pulled up that day is probably pushing 40 years of service, retired from Fairfax County, Virginia, now is a full-time captain with us. So I don't think you could have had a better crew and, and we're very proud of how they performed, so.
Well, we're proud of you too.
Yeah, and pass that off to them as well.
We, we definitely will.
Another squad.
And I think, uh, that shift's going to be on, uh, I've talked to the manager this morning, you requested we have those guys in the near future come in. So that shift that was working will be on, uh, Tuesday week of, of our budget retreat, our budget, uh, meeting. They're going to come in the very beginning just so you guys can have a minute to.
That would be fantastic.
Awesome, thank you.
And I will add that they did an unbelievable job, were great to work, Alan provided great leadership. Also, we had great leadership from the police and, and that, and our.
Absolutely.
Utility crews were out there cutting water off during, while they were actively fighting fires. It was a great team effort and it was real impressive to watch.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have a great squad.
And, and just for the public, because I have gotten several, um, messages and texts and inbox, it is still an active, uh, investigation and we do not have an answer for you yet on the cause of that fire. All right, well, um, we will move into our, uh, public comment. And, um, anyone from the public who'd like to speak, you have three minutes to come up and do so. And if you would like to speak on any of the public hearings, we will allow public comment at that time as well. So is anyone from the public who would like to speak now? Kim, do, do we have any submitted online? Okay, um, if there's no one, we will move right into our public hearings. I'll make a motion to open, open a public hearing to receive input on the 2122 budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to speak on the budget? Staff, are we going to have a presentation?
We are still preparing the budget, this is a chance, an opportunity for.
Okay.
Public input if there's.
And there will be more opportunities.
Yeah, there'll be more opportunities to review the budget, this is one to see if there's any funding needs or requests outside of the nonprofits and others we've done, you know.
So if there's no one from the, uh, public that would like to speak at the bu- on the budget right now, we will have other opportunities as we go through our budget cycle. So I'll make a, a motion to close that public hearing on the 2122 budget. All in favor?
Aye.
And we will move into, uh, open a motion to consider a text amendment to chapter 40, article eight of signs. All in favor?
Aye.
Miles?
Good evening, mayor, council. Happy to be in front of you all again this evening. As the mayor just said, I'm coming in front of you to handle a text amendment, finally updating our sign ordinance to comply with a 2015 Supreme Court decision in Reed versus Town of Gilbert. So we'll go over that background briefly so you understand what is happening, give you a rundown on some key parts of the ordinance and hopefully get a motion from you all. So as you're aware, sign ordinances are utilized to handle the aesthetics of signs in regards to zoning ordinance and the appearance of a town and it's carefully balanced with the ability to have free speech and open advertisement for businesses and opinions and things of that nature. However, sign ordinances because of that have sometimes shifted to become content-based as opposed to more, um, style or aesthetically based in regards to size and height and things of that nature. And in 2015, the Supreme Court came down and made a ruling that basically said, you cannot have a sign ordinance that dictates a sign's requirements, whether that's height, size, length of display, anything, based on the, what that sign says as opposed to the type of sign of where it's located or its size or its height. So that, um, that fight was had, the Supreme Court made their decision and we did our research and a lot of other communities are doing their research and we had, uh, 11 sign categories such as patriotic, subdivision, nonprofit, political, real estate, et cetera, that are all content-based regulations. So what we did is, first of all, we got rid of those content-based categories as much as we could. Uh, we still, government still remains, so there are certain allowances that do remain. We went in and added a catch-all category for all of the temporary signage that we see around town as a result of various activities, political events, special events, to try and capture the ability to still have all of that signage available while not dictating it by its content. And we also added a, a regulation related to preventing any interaction with that sight distance triangle obstruction that we see with fences and landscaping, but also to have that with signs so that any, if anyone's placing them right on the corner of their property and it's becoming a nuisance for traffic, that we can deal with that as well as, uh, clarified and just corrected various language throughout article eight, there were some disconnects with the way it was organized, so we, we think we set it up in a little bit more of a understandable manner for someone who is not in it every day like Jeremy and I, but is just trying to apply for a sign permit for their business. So one of the big highlights of the ordinance is the establishment of a yard sign category. So this is a non-commercial activity or event signage that is allowed to be placed on a parcel 30 days prior to an activity or event, remain up during said activity or event, and must be removed within 10 days of the conclusion of said activity or event. And this is our catch-all category. So this will handle your, I just replaced my roof sign where they want to advertise. This will handle the political election, the general election and the primary election. These are actually, the timelines are actually taken from North Carolina general statutes for political sign, uh, timeframe. So we, we found that and we thought that was a good idea to stick with. And, you know, this gives us the ability and the community the ability to still express opinions, advertise, special events, you know, talk about real estate, demonstrate that work was recently completed here, all the while still giving us the ability to rein in the number of signs, which will be limited to four, the size of signage available on property, the location of the signage, et cetera. So we're trying to find that balance and it will be a work in progress and major overhaul like this is always going to have some things that staff did not think of, but we are fairly confident that we've put enough thought into this, that this is something that will at least allow us to enforce and deal with any issues moving forward, idea, you know, with other text amendments, if there's an error that needs to be fixed or, or if we figure out something that could work better or we identify something that's not working great, you know, we'll come back and, and readjust, but this will bring us in line with the Supreme Court decision and we believe it will set us up to move forward successfully as a community. Staff agrees and planning and zoning voted 7-0 in favor of the text amendment and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
The only question. Yeah, the only question I had was just to, for, just to make sure I understand. So this would be signs, include signs, like the yard signs on private property. So if I put a sign in my front yard, those would apply to me.
Yes, sir.
Whether it's a political sign or, you know, I, I love cats, whatever, you know, it doesn't matter what the content was, right?
Exactly.
Those would apply to me on my.
Exactly. Exactly. And these are some of the circumstances where, you know, we're going to probably have some debates as regards to what the definition of an activity or event, you know. For instance, we see the, you know, "No Hate" in Carolina Beach signs and their likeness. And we would argue that as a continually ongoing activity or event in the eyes of, you know, town code enforcement. But, you know, there will be some flexibility, there will be some growing pains.
We trial there.
We very may hear from the town attorney that something is not working and it needs to be changed, but we will deal with it appropriately.
Awesome job, Miles.
So, the code enforcement officer is the one that actually enforces this?
Predominantly. I mean, Jeremy, myself, and Gloria, the zoning officials, as well as the building inspector. And even sometimes our police department will get involved. But it really predominantly falls upon code enforcement, because most of the complaints we get are either direct, you know, nuisance complaints in regards to a sign. You know, if someone has profanity written in advertising their property or something of that nature, and he will investigate. Or more often than not, it is temporary advertisement or real estate signs which are placed in the right of way, as opposed to on someone's property, which is not legal. If you want to advertise that you just did their roof or our property's for sale, it needs to be on the property, not just on the side of the road.
Right.
Thanks. Need a motion?
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to amend Chapter 40, Article 8, sign regulations as presented.
Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Yep, number three?
Yep.
We're all the way at the bottom of the council where
Oh, man, I jumped in too soon.
I just had you excited, that's all.
With the statement of approval, start back over, is it, okay? Okay, a statement of approval. The council where I was in accordance with the provisions of the NCGS 168-383 does hereby find and determine that the adoption of a text amendment to amend Chapter 40, Article 8, to update the sign ordinance to comply with the 2015 Supreme Court decision is consistent with the goals and objectives of the adopted land use plan and other long-range plans. If applicable, list any recommended restrictions or requirements.
Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Pleasure to see you all this evening.
Thank you, Miles. All right, committee appointments. I'm sorry, do I, I need to make a motion to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Committee appointments, Lynn?
The committee appointments for this time were for the Centennial Committee. And if you guys remember when we discussed this, we wanted to be as inclusive as possible. So, we ended up with a committee of 11 with two moving over. So, there were nine open slots. And upon my review of the list of people who applied, I think it's a good cross-sectional representation of the community. So, what I wanted to do was make a motion that we, just expand that committee to 13 and take all 13. I think that will achieve the initial goal that we had of inclusivity.
Yep.
Gentlemen, do you have a problem with that?
I'm in favor, yeah, that's fine.
I'm fine with that.
Make a motion.
Kim, is that okay? Okay.
So, I'd make a motion to extend, to expand the Centennial Committee to 13, I think is the total number, and to appoint all noted applicants.
Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Non-agenda items. Does anyone have non-agenda items?
I have a couple. Went through our next retreat for the budget, what was that date?
I believe it's April 27?
So, was that a Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday? I just had one, it kind of was an idea to propose. So, this is an election year, which means there's a possibility three seats are going to be gone. I've been reminded of that by a couple of residents lately. But more importantly, when you begin your first month on council, there's a lot of stuff that you don't know. And residents don't understand this. Or not that they don't understand this, they just haven't been in that position yet to see what it is. So, your first two weeks, you sit down with the town attorney, the town manager, and they give you this two-hour spiel on what you need to know, remember for the next four years. And then they say, and really quick, you're on a couple of committees, here's this meeting, we'll see you like next Tuesday.
That's the point when you go, what have I done?
So, no, it's like, heck yeah, this is going to rock, because that's the kind of guy I am. But as a new council member who isn't seasoned, there's things that you don't know to ask. There's things about our community, not just the history of the fishermen and everything here, but the town stuff that you don't know to ask, or you might not find out for maybe a year or so being into that position. So, when I first got on, I asked Kim, I think that one of the first things we need to do is we need to create some sort of a packet or welcome thing that starts off, that shows you maybe the two budgets for the previous two years. What are some of the additions from planning and zoning that have happened for the past 12 months? What have been some of the biggest events from our first responders? There's a lot, there's a lot of, what things legality are we in or have been in the past few years? Because when you jump on, it's so hard to have that understanding when you go into a council meeting and you don't see, oh, they're talking about this. What is ROT mean? I don't know what ROT means, you know, or, or any of those notions. I think that we should start now, because this December, there is a chance that there will be three people who could be brand-new, who need to have some sort of a, in that office, some sort of something that we need to create, because we should have a spot where they feel comfortable to go in, sit down, have everything right there at their hand, whether it's with another council member individually. I would like to, because it's, it is mind-blowing what you don't know about this town. Until eight months later, they say, by the way, we're doing this. Like, oh, man, I've never even heard this. I've been here eight years. It's a good starting point, because what happens is, in my eye, is that in order for council to truly take care of our community, because that's ultimately what we do, it's your money, and we're just kind of small representation of what's going on, as well as our workers. In order for that to be successful, we have to grow together, because the only way our town does is through progression. And if you get two new people on that unfortunately don't know any of some of the inside of that history, it's not as easy, because then the others have that power, that knowledge of, oh, it's this. But it should be, we're sharing this and having that information tangible is the key piece.
Very good. Joe Dan, I thought we broke them in pretty good, though.
Yeah, it's been a good year and a half.
Yeah, that first meeting was amazing.
Nine-hour council meeting?
Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah, so, that's number one. Number two is that this has been such a highlighted meeting for me, because it's just been so fun. The Girl Scouts, I mean it, get that video, send it to them. That's something that
That was awesome.
the Girl Scouts should see. It's amazing. It made me smile really big.
I hope they show their kids someday.
Thanks to our first responders, chief, tell the boys, chief, word, tell the boys.
And the girls.
And tell everybody that we appreciate all that they do for the community. And keep rocking, guys. It's going to be a crazy summer.
I'm, I'm good. I got my legs in.
The only, the only thing, first of all, you know, you can't, you can't thank the first responders enough, right? I mean, I mean, it was just amazing, that whole thing. If there's anything that good that comes out of a tragedy like that is, is you see what we have working for us, number one. And then the community coming together, to me, is just, is just amazing. That's number one. On a, so, completely different note, and I'm sure it's on a maintenance schedule, but our water tower's looking a little shabby.
Are you volunteering, Jeff?
No, I'm not volunteering. But I will agree with Joe Dan on getting some type of Council 101 book together, because it is, you do learn a lot
It's an abundance.
trial by fire, you know, without a doubt. So, I think, I think that's a good point, Joe Dan. And that's all I
Does that mean you take back all those things you said about the sitting council?
I, well, I tell you what, I have total respect for our past councils and such. I mean, total respect.
You know, it's funny, because whether you were in opposition to each other before, once you get up here, you're playing on the same team, because you better have each other's back.
There's no doubt.
So, it's, and I, I like you and Lynn defending the pack it in, pack it out. So,
It's not easy right now.
I know it's not. That's why I'm glad you're doing it.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, so, anyway, yes, it's been a very emotional week for everybody on council and staff and our citizens. And we always pull through, we're a tough community, so, and we will continue to do that. Chief, again, thank you. And we certainly don't want to slight our police department. They were right there, right along beside you. And like you said, we sat in that trailer, and they were right there with us. So, very good job. And Bruce, you too. I only have one question. Where are we at with St. Joseph Street? Did we get that? You knew I was going to ask you that. So, did we get that? Guys, you saw my email that we have, we still are on the table with DOT for the St. Joseph Street bike lanes. All we have to do is apply.
Yeah, and it's, I was working with Ben Meister, our project manager, was putting all this information in the other day at some cost numbers we were asking about. So, he was submitting it all to the NPO and NC DOT to get started.
Very good.
Hopefully have some
Okay, anything else? Well, then, if not, I will make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss attorney-client matter in accordance with NCGS 143-318.11A3. Matters being discussed are 18 CVS 3151, Town of Carolina Beach versus Carolina Freeman LLC; 18 CVS 3152, Town of Carolina Beach versus BNF Enterprises LLC; 18 CVS 3153, Town of Carolina Beach versus DRDK LLC; 18 CVS 3154, Town of Carolina Beach versus Freeman, Freeman Beach LLC; 18 CVS 3155, Town of Carolina Beach versus Winnie Futch Airs. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to have that memorized before we
Yeah, it's a
Before this is over. Well, Brandy, we are glad to have you, and I hope we've been entertaining tonight and informative for you.